Too many words together without a pause. I know this to be true. And I'll just ask Ms. Camaro. Amaya, I still don't really know how to say your last name.
Cole Zicky, and I do have a couple of slides I just wanted to share as well. Give me one moment. So I would just like to remind the public if you would like to participate in public comment, the phone number is six, six, nine, nine hundred, six, eight, three, three. At the prompt, the meeting ID is eight, three, five, two, three, one, zero, two, six, eight, one. You'll press pound and then you will press star nine to speak. If you are not calling in by phone, but you are on the Zoom app, you can push the raise hand button to speak. And then I have an additional slide here regarding the Spanish interpretation. So the meeting this evening will have live Spanish interpretation. To access the interpretation, you will need to access the Zoom app from either a cellphone, tablet, or computer. And then instructions on how to do that are listed in English and Spanish on the agenda posted on the city's website. Once you join the meeting from the Zoom application, there's a small globe at the bottom or top of the screen. Click on that globe and it will allow you to select the language of interpretation of either English or Spanish. That's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Cole Zicky. So I'm going to change my background and lead us all in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Camaro, would you please take the role?
Commissioner Hale.
Here.
Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Vice Chair Pont.
Here.
And Chair Hardy.
Here. That brings us to the public forum section of the agenda. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the Commission on Matters that are not on our agenda, which then means that there cannot be a substantive discussion or comment by the Commission. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak to us during the public forum?
It looks like we have one member of the public present, but they do not want to speak at this time.
Very good. Then I will close the public forum and move on to consent items. We have one item on our consent calendar. That's approval of minutes from November 19th, 2020. With the consent calendar, either a member of the public or a member of the Planning Commission may request that an item be removed from consent for further discussion. Are there any requests from members of the public? Ms. Cole Zicky?
There are not any at this time.
Thank you. Are there any members of the Commission who would like to pull this item from the consent calendar? I see none. Thank you, then. I'll entertain a motion.
Would like to move the consent agenda.
Second.
Ms. Camaro.
Vice Chair Pont.
Yes.
Commissioner Hale.
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
And Chair Hardy.
Yes. So that brings us to our one public hearing for the evening. This is item 5.1 on the agenda. A request by Anthony McKelley for approval of a lot line adjustment and a use permit between parcels number 009401041, which is 1125 Cornella Drive, and APN number 009401042 in the medium density residential zoning district. Ms. Camaro, is this your report to present?
It is my report, Chair Hardy. Thank you.
Thank you.
So as you mentioned, the applicant is seeking a lot line adjustment to transfer approximately 3,010 square feet from the vacant parcel ending in 042 to the developed parcel 1125 Cornella Drive, ending in 041 in order to build a 10 by 50 foot pool. No development is proposed on the vacant parcel. The lot line adjustment will increase the size of the developed 9,971 square foot parcel to 12,981 square feet with a corresponding reduction in size of the undeveloped parcel from 7,122 square feet to 4,112 square feet. As the vacant parcel will be reduced to less than the 7,000 square foot minimum lot size for parcels in the medium density zoning district, the applicant has concurrently submitted a use permit application for Planning Commission approval for the creation of the small lot. As far as medium density residential development standards go, the developed parcel 1125 Cornella Drive does not meet the minimum front, rear, and/or side setbacks, making it an existing non-conforming lot. But the lot line adjustment would not rectify the non-conforming setbacks, but it will also not increase the degree of non-conformity. As far as the small lot development standards, although the vacant parcel resulting from the lot line adjustment would be 4,112 square feet in size and while less than the minimum 7,000 square foot lot size in the MR zone, it would meet the small lot development standards. Staff finds no further issues related to the proposed project and no correspondence has been received by staff regarding the proposed lot line adjustment and use permit. And for the reasons described above, staff recommends that the Planning Commission consider and concur with the staff finding that the project is exempt from requirements of SEQA pursuant to Section 15305 and accept the Planning Director's approval to grant the lot line adjustment between two legal parcels located at APN 009401041, which is 1125 Cornella Drive, and APN 009401042 in the medium density zoning districts, and accept the required findings and approve a resolution granting the use permit approval for the creation of the 4,100 square foot lot, square foot small lot on the property located at APN 009401042. And staff is available for any questions as well as the applicant and Chris Cole, who is the surveyor. Thank you, Chair Hardy.
Thank you, Ms. Camaro. Are there any questions for staff from the Commission? If there are none, I'll go to the public hearing then. I'm going to open the public hearing and ask the applicant or the applicant's representatives if they wish to make a presentation. Ms. Cole Zicky, is there anyone to be recognized on behalf of the applicant? Ah. I see Mr. Cole and Mr. McKelley. Very good.
Hey, we are unmuted.
Please.
Want me to speak? Can they hear me? Yes.
Oh, we are all ears.
Okay, thank you. Just to give the Commission a little history, the home that you're saying is non-conforming used to sit on the lot, the vacant lot. The house was built in 1910. And in 1950, they moved it onto the lot that it now sits at 1125. So the things that say it's non-conforming was done way before I ever bought the house. I've been there 38 years now. And the lot was not created until 1998. Until 1998, the neighbor on the corner owned to my 1125 Cornella lot. He wanted to do an addition on the house, did not have enough money. So he created that lot out of this monster lot he had. And at the time we created it, it was a single family lot, but I understand today it's medium density. So in reality, I did create this, even this small lot that really wouldn't be there today if we hadn't done this back in 1998. The only reason I'm building the pool is my wife had a really bad accident about eight months ago. She shattered her tibia in four places. She now has two plates below her kneecap with 10 screws. She's always going to have a limp. She was in a wheelchair for months. And the surgeon suggested to me to join a health club or get a pool that she can exercise in because she's always going to be in pain. And that's the only reason I'm doing what I'm doing is to try to help my wife out. And the pool is only going to be four foot deep. It's strictly an exercise pool. It's going, if any of you've looked at the Google photo of my, of the lot, I have a bocce court that is 10 by 65. The pool is just replacing it being 10 by 50. There is a basketball court on that property, a baseball diamond. I built a playground for all the kids in the neighborhood is what I've done over the last well, I bought it in 98, so since then I made this playground for all the neighborhood. And it also kept my kids at home, which was a benefit. I think that's all that, some of that is not obviously in the staff report, and that's why I wanted to tell everybody. And I hope I get approved. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer anything of anybody's concern. But I will also say, across the street from me on Cornella are three small lots, even smaller than this 4,000 foot lot that was created maybe 10 to 15 years ago when it was one parcel from Main Street to Park Street. And the owner had four houses, three of them very small houses and one big one on the corner. And they created four lots there. And there is, and that's what's there today. I'm not the only small, I'm not going to be the only small lot in the neighborhood. I look at three of them across the street and one of them, my daughter does live in. It's a thousand foot house on a 3,000, I think, square foot lot. And that's about all I know, I guess. And everything I've done on the property, the garage, and I should say also, and maybe Chris can adjust, address this. On my 1125 Cornella parcel, the deed says I have two parcels. But I built a garage and kind of a shop there, personal shop. And it turns out that line is right through the shop, but the city, when I got a building permit, never asked. And so we're going to clean that up and make that just one parcel, that 1125. Really, technically, I have three parcels if this got approved. I mean, I had three parcels before this all went through. But maybe if you want Chris to go through that, I know nothing. He brought it to my attention. I didn't even know I had two parcels at 1125, but I only get one tax bill. And I've only got one tax bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McKelley. Are there any questions for the applicant or for the surveyor, Mr. Cole? Well, I'll I'll put Mr. Cole on the spot. I'm the existing developed parcel that Mr. McKelley was just explaining has a two parcel legal description. Is it your assessment, Mr. Cole, that there are two legal parcels there? As opposed to a two parcel description that's an artifact from who knows what, but, but not reflected in in whether or not there's one or two parcels?
Well, there are, the, that existing APN, the developed assessor's parcel is two parcels, but it's really a relic from another time. Those parcels have been sold as a unit through several past owners. And the garage on the developed parcel, which straddles that interior line, is essentially, I would call it a voluntary intent to merge by owner. So this doesn't really, that's what it would be if it was in the county. This doesn't really have anything to do with the topic at hand, but I just wanted to, Anthony mentioned it, so by doing this lot line adjustment, we are actually resolving that particular matter for the city because when the residence parcel, the developed parcel comes out of the lot line adjustment, it will have one perimeter legal description and the two underlying sort of non-conforming or illegal, whatever you want to call them, those lots will disappear.
Okay.
A byproduct of this process, really not applicable to the subject at hand at all.
Thank you.
Does that make sense?
Yes, it did make sense, Mr. Cole. Thank you very much. One more opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or Mr. Cole, the surveyor? I'm seeing none, so I'll ask Ms. Cole Zicky if there are any members of the public who would like to speak while the public hearing is still open. Ms. Cole Zicky? You're muted. I don't see you.
Like Chair Hardy, it looks like she, Ms. Cole Zicky, might be having some technical difficulties with her audio. Let me see if I can unmute her personally. You should be unmuted now, Amalia.
Ms. Cole Zicky, you're showing muted on my screen.
Give me one second, Chair Hardy. Okay, Chair Hardy, Amalia is having some technical difficulties, but she did make me aware that there are no members of the public wishing to speak at the moment.
Thank you. Then I will close the public hearing and bring the matter back to the Commission for discussion. Who would like to lead the discussion this evening? Vice Chair Pont, please.
I don't want to stand in the way of this project. The applicant has a very good reason for doing it. Owns both lots. But let's face it, his desire is to put in a swimming pool. And we're doing it by creating not only a substandard lot, but a very misshapen, uneven, and odd lot on top of that. I would wish there was another way to do this that didn't create two odd lots that in 30 or 40 years, somebody sitting on the planning conviction will go, what in the dickens did they do there? And why did they do it? And I understand why we're doing it. But I would hope in the next rewrite of the zoning code, there's a way to do something like this without creating essentially a future problem for somebody else to handle. Now, I understand there's a couple of accessory uses on the existing smaller lot that will be subsumed into the newer lot, the larger lot. And that's good, but we have a small lot that has two accessory uses on it, and it's doing just fine. A swimming pool would be a third accessory use. So I would hope that in the future creation of our new zoning code, we will figure out some way to allow accessory uses on a lot without a main use. If we were able to do that here, he would have been able to put in the swimming pool on the second lot. And we probably wouldn't even have seen it. That's, that's my pitch for this one. But I think the project should move forward as designed, reluctantly.
Thank you, Vice Chair Pont. Commission Hale.
I feel a little obligated to come to the defense of odd lots. You know, I think, I think odd lots are opportunities. I think, I think the one thing that this proposal does, I think, is it kind of introduces what I think we have to address as a, as a needed narrative where we support. I mean, we talk about infill development, the only way you can accomplish infill development is by subdividing or creating shieving off pieces. I think, you know, lots throughout town are not, thankfully, not, not all consistent. And, you know, I, I think that's a joyous thing here. So I, I would hate to see our new zoning code even attempt to sort of, you know, make uniform. I don't, I guess, you know, maybe we just look at it differently, but I sort of embrace the diversity. I think it's a strength here that, that we have odd lots and, and character that, that varies from one piece to the next. And I think, I don't think there should be any compunction to sort of state that this, you know, won't be developed. That's certainly Mr. McKelley's choice to do or not do. He's allowed to do it. And I think it creates an opportunity for him down, down the road and for the greater community. It could be for his kids or for someone else or and small lots frankly, just by almost by definition are going to be the more affordable. And, you know, I think struggling to get things to be affordable here is, is a challenge. But this is one way where we can, you know, put a, put a, an oar in the water toward that, toward that goal and do it. So I support it. You know, I have no issue. I think it's, I think it is kind of important that we think, that we do start to think about kind of small lots and infill development and rebuilding kind of a narrative that supports that activity. You know, so that people don't, don't feel they have to claim, you know, I'm never going to do anything with this. I think it's enough. It's a good thing for town. I think it's a healthy thing, so. I support it. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Hale. Commissioner Anderson.
I support this lot line adjustment. It does create a small lot, but I don't see that as being a long-term issue.
I'm not hearing any audio. I don't know if anyone else can hear.
We can hear you, Lester. And we can hear Autumn. You can't hear us? Yes, you can't hear us?
No, I have not heard anything from Autumn.
I heard Autumn, too.
You want to unmute again, Autumn, and say something again, please? See if Lester can hear.
I'm going to stop my video, see if that helps.
Well, now that Lester's only.
Didn't even show Lester.
What's that?
You're, oh, never mind.
He's only ears. Autumn, you want to try again, please, to see if you can hear you?
I was saying that I support the lot line adjustment and I don't see that the creation of the small lot creating any long-term issues.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Mind if I respond to some of this? My reluctance.
Leave it all, please.
Isn't so much shaped by the lot line adjustment, although it's partially there. It's the idea that the applicant's desire is to put in a swimming pool on a lot that he owns, which is directly adjacent to his house. And that we need to go through a lot line adjustment to allow him to do that. My problem is that's an overboard solution to what should be a fairly direct solvable problem. But I would like to see on our next zoning code is a way to handle situations like this without requiring somebody could go through a lot line adjustment. If you own the lot next door, you should be able to put an auxiliary or ancillary use on it for the main structure that you own next door. In other words, we wouldn't even have seen this project. Another way to handle it might have been a variance. So we give them a variance for an ancillary structure on the lot next door, where I might point out the two ancillary structures already exist. So yes, we are creating a small lot and yes, we are creating a rather cumbersome, oddly shaped main lot. And as a former planner, I'm not exactly overjoyed about that. But the main point is that we shouldn't have to go through all this to put, somebody put a swimming pool on a lot they own that's directly adjacent to their house that they also own. You should have a simple way to do that in the code.
Thank you, Vice Chair Pont. Well, I don't think I have much to say. I'm not sure I have anything to add, really. I, I do support staff's recommendations for approval. It, it wouldn't be accurate to say that I authored the small lot ordinance, but I think it's, it is fair to say that's there largely because I advocated and pushed for it during the course of the general plan update that was adopted in 1993. So I'm committed to the concept that, that we should have that possibility. But I also understand that Vice Chair Pont's objection isn't to the fact that we can create small lots, but rather the, the very cumbersome and very cumbersome and I'm sure somewhat expensive nature of the requirement that we've imposed on Mr. McKelley for the opportunity to put a swimming pool on, on an adjoining parcel. That's precisely the kind of thing that, that we should take up as the zoning ordinance update moves forward. And I don't think I have anything to add, so any other discussion or is there, ah, Commissioner Anderson, please?
Am I correct in thinking that the reason that the lot line adjustment was needed is because the pool wouldn't fit on the empty parcel and it had to cross over into both parcels? I thought that that's.
No, the, the, the reason the application took this path, Ms. Camaro, I'm sure will correct me if I'm wrong, is because we do not allow accessory structures where there's no primary use established. So it's a, you know, the notion, and it's, it's by no means unique to St. Helena, is that in order to get a permit for an accessory structure, there has to be a something on the same parcel that it is accessory to. That's the notion. And, and that could be a use, you know, a barn is accessory to agriculture. Napa County, it's very hard to get a permit for a barn if there's nothing else going on. But it, here, it, you know, we're talking about a swimming pool. It's accessory to a resident. So that's the planning principle. I think I'm getting affirmation from Ms. Camaro that I didn't screw that up. And are there any other questions or comments or, or anything else to discuss before some bold commissioner makes a motion? I'm all ears.
I would like to move that we concur with the staff recommendation that this project is set from SEQA. That we concur with the planning director's approval of the lot line adjustment. And that we accept the findings and approve a resolution granting the use permit for the creation of the 4,112 square foot lot through the lot line adjustment. Second.
I'm hoping it will be a second.
I believe Commissioner Hale seconded.
Very good, very good. Then if there's no further discussion, I will ask Ms. Camaro to call the roll.
Vice Chair Pont?
Yes.
Commissioner, Commissioner Hale?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
And Chair Hardy?
Yes.
So thank you, Mr. Cole, Mr. McKelley, for enduring our technical difficulties and tedious discussion. We'll move on to scheduled matters. Actually, there are no scheduled matters, so that's going to take us right to department reports. Director DeRosa, do you have a report for us this evening?
Good evening. And I don't, I don't want to say I have a lengthy report, just some reminders and updates. First, being that we, I think I mentioned this at the last meeting, we will be having a meeting on December 15th and bringing items for the commission to consider. But I think the most notable news for the evening is that very bittersweet, this is Chair Hardy's last meeting, and congratulations to him. He's scheduled to be appointed to the city council on the December 8th meeting. So he can no longer serve in both roles. So Chair Hardy, we're going to miss you, and I want to extend an invitation for you to come back as a special guest on the 15th, so we can present some well-deserved recognition to you and Commissioner Manette.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I do appreciate that. And since you mentioned Commissioner Manette as well, I do want to explain in case there's anyone present who, who doesn't understand this, that Commissioner Manette's abrupt departure was certainly unplanned for and, and, and really the unfortunate and unintended consequence of a kind of clerical error that had the end of her term incorrectly listed on the city's website, which then lulled those few who pay any attention to such things anyway to sleep until Vice Chair Pont brought it to our attention. And, and we discovered you know, suddenly and, and to our chagrin that we had a planning commissioner who had served past the end of her term. So my apologies to all of you and, and to Commissioner Manette for that very awkward and abrupt transition. But I look forward to the meeting on the 15th and yeah, and we can, we can talk more then. So I'm thinking that's it for reports. Any other reports?
That's all I had to share.
Excellent. Then there's really not much left to do. At eight agenda forecast, there is an opportunity for any commissioner who has something on their mind that they would like to see placed on a future agenda to make that request. So I'm opening that door in case someone's got a, a, a desire. But I see none, so then for the last time, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Lester.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lester.
And good night.
Thank you, Lester.
Thanks, Lester.
Thank you.